I called to order the regular meeting of the Lakewood City Council on November 24, 2025, at 7:01 PM. To connect with the council meeting online, please use one of the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments, you may post comments of any link to LakewoodSpeaks.org. That is our online forum for public comments. We will be leaving that open through the evening tonight and until 10:00 AM tomorrow for anyone that would like to leave comments. Anyone who would like to address the city will be given the opportunity during general public comment with a limit of three minutes for un-adjented, non-adjented items. And also, if anyone is here to speak specifically about meeting minutes for the Lakewood City Council, that can be done on the consent agenda. So with that, Mr. Robb, will you please start us off by calling the roll?
Strom.
Here.
LeBier.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Cruz Kay.
Here.
Maya Guerrero.
Here.
Sharzai.
Here.
Sinks.
Here.
Cruz I.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Furman.
Here.
Nystrom.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor. You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you so much. And this is a time where I'd ask, if you are able to stand, please join us to do so for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection after.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the members of the City Council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The City Council is empowered by Charter 7.2B to agree by unanimous vote, excluding the member at issue, to excuse any member of the Council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. All right, and with that, we have a proclamation that we will be presenting this evening. And we'll let the Mayor Protam take care of that one. And do you want to inter-- there you go.
I'm going to be joined from a few members of the community. But with that, we'll go ahead and read the proclamation. November Transgender Awareness Month. Whereas Transgender Day of Remembrance began in 1999 as a vigil organized to honor the memory of Rita Hester and Chanel Pickett, two Black transgender women murdered in acts of anti-transgender violence. And whereas Transgender Day of Remembrance has become an annual observance in November that honors the memory of transgender people around the world whose lives were cut short by violence, including Jack Skratan, a cherished member of the Denver metro community. And whereas this annual observance provides a platform for transgender communities and allies to raise awareness about the continued threat of violence faced by transgender, non-binary, gender non-conforming, and two-spirit people. And whereas this month and in all months, we strive to create greater awareness of the transgender community in memoriam, in honor, and also in celebration. And we strive to create an environment that fosters acceptance and discourages and condemns violence. And whereas the City of Lakewood reaffirms the community's commitment to ensuring diversity, social justice, equity, and mutual respect throughout our community. And whereas the City of Lakewood proudly states that we support our transgender and gender diverse community members. Now therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the people of the City of Lakewood, I, Wendy Strom, Mayor of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim November Transgender Awareness Month. And I'll go ahead and turn over the mic if you all would like to say a few words.
I want to first of all thank the Mayor Protam for being the first person to take my call when we started to navigate issues with Jax. I've dreaded this month since the election last November because I knew what it would mean. I have said goodbye to five trans friends this year alone. Five names that would have been in community gatherings and instead are names and pictures on altars. They have died from suicide, from homicide, from starvation, from housing instability. And I can't tell you the heartbreak it is to see people who should be with you in those places. To be trans is to fight, and that means to be an ally, it is to fight harder. I don't want a month of awareness. I don't need a month of awareness. I need a month of action. I need 12 months of action. I need everyday boots on the ground, fighting for my community. I don't need another name on that altar. And so I say the name Jack Skratan, and I ask everyone in this room to join me. Jack Skratan. Jack Skratan. She was truly the best of us, and I can't tell you how unbearable her loss is. And I thank you, and I invite you to fight harder.
One thing about Jack Skratan is she lives on in all of us. Her activism lives on in all of us, and we will continue to let Jack Skratan live within us and through us. Long live Jack.
Long live Jack.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mayor Protam, for your work on that and for all of you here that are here tonight for that reason and others. I will move on next to a bittersweet part of our meeting this evening as we are getting ready in a few moments to usher in a new counselor. That means we need to say goodbye to one that has worked by some of our sides for four years now, and that won't be an easy thing. I'm going to wait. First, Mayor Protam has a few words. We have a few words up here before we send you off.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of words from my colleague. I had the opportunity to meet Counselor Maya Guerrero when she made the decision to step up and run. We were both getting a hang of things, learning the ropes, getting to meet people, and we overlapped quite a bit. And I felt so inspired in those early days by her excitement and her energy and was really excited for what I knew we could accomplish on City Council. Sophia Maya Guerrero was the youngest person that's ever been elected to City Council, and she inspired another young person to run for City Council who then broke that record. So what we have seen over the last four years is a real transition in our community through tremendous leadership coming out of War II and coming out of Counselor Maya Guerrero. Some of the things that I want to just make sure get highlighted is her leadership on the Housing Policy Commission has been transformative. We are talking about things, including inclusionary zoning, that we wouldn't have even dreamed of five, six years ago. She was a catalyst for the safe parking lots. She helped us anchor into the Navigation Center that now serves our entire county in the metro area. And I want to highlight just one story from the many that I could think of. But part of her motivation for the Navigation Center came only six weeks after being elected to office. Counselor Maya Guerrero took the night shift at one of our faith-based partners as they were offering severe and extreme weather support in the community. And to me, that sort of leadership really just speaks to that understanding and getting in there, seeing what needs to happen, offering solutions. And she took that experience and really helped lead the way in the work that we do in this community. We have a budget now that reflects climate crisis response, 21st century public safety solutions, and has been completely responsive to communities' asks and wishes. And that is largely because of the great work coming from Sophia. I know that I've been a better counselor because of her work. She's pushed me to think differently often, and I have appreciated that. And I know that Lakewood is better because of her leadership. She will be tremendously missed, but we look forward to working with her as a very, very informed citizen now. Thank you.
Ready for staff?
Sure, thank you. As your time on City Council comes to a close, from a staff perspective, we just want to express our deep appreciation for the opportunity to work with you. Your intelligence, your leadership, and your unwavering dedication to the community has made a lasting impact. And what's really stood out is your ability to be a real quick study. I'll bet people have noticed that. You can take a real complicated issue and find clarity in it way before anyone else does, and you do it with confidence. Your contributions have not only shaped important decisions today, but will continue to benefit our community for years to come. We will miss you too from a staff perspective. You brought depth and agility to every conversation. And between us, you and I have had many. You make collaboration effective and enjoyable, and I mean that. It's been a pleasure to work alongside you, Sophia. Counselor Maya Guerrero, forgive me. Thank you for your service, your insight, and your dedication. You'll be missed and always remembered.
And I will welcome now Counselor Maya Guerrero's co-counselor, Isabel Cruz. And while she's speaking, anybody else that would like to say a few words, please go ahead and raise your hand.
Thank you, and what to add to the pieces that have been said. And I'll leave some of the things that might make me cry to the cards that I already wrote you. But I think as somebody who has had the privilege of being your constituent, to being your co-leader, and to learning alongside you and pushing each other, I think I have had the privilege of a lifetime, and something that not a lot of people can say, they've had the opportunity to have, which is not only to really have a co-conspirator who can help you represent the people of your district and push things forward that are desperately needed and draw attention to issues that have so long gone ignored or so long, the kind of subtle undertones have not been said out loud. I've had the privilege of not only doing that work, but of growing as a human and of growing my network of friends and how I believe this work can be done and how beautiful it can be and the joy that it can bring. Because so much of the things that scare me and scare regular people, from, you know, some hard conversations, tackling hard issues, doing work that hasn't been done because it is groundbreaking, is the stuff that you latch on to and make possible for other people. And so I'm so proud to have worked alongside you, and I'm so excited for all of the emails I'm going to get in my inbox of you pushing me to do things differently and better. And so I'm so thrilled for this next chapter in our relationship and for our city, and I'm so grateful for all that you've done in your time to come.
Counselor Ryan.
So I apologize, I didn't come with prepared remarks, and I can't say it any better than what people have already said. You know, there are some people that you gravitate to when they walk into a room. They have a light, right? And light doesn't seem appropriate, effervescent light perhaps, you know, it's more of a lively. It's an energetic light, and it's something that you have brought to this council constantly. And I guess my thing that I've learned the most was from when you were the chair of our, maybe you still are a chair for now, the HBC Committee. And, you know, moving things through that committee takes a certain tenacity, and you have that, right? You have that ability to not only bring people together with that light, that cheerfulness and optimism, but just, we're not going to let this go. We're going to keep things moving. And you're not afraid to kick me in the shins when I screw up, and you're not afraid to say, hey, you did better, or you still can do better. And when Counselor Cruz was talking about growing, I mean, I know that I've grown, and that's in large part to you. And I guess the only other thing I will say is, to me, the biggest compliment I can give someone is something that I said when then-Counselor Stewart, now Representative Stewart, stepped down. And that was, I think, without a doubt, you are leaving this city in a better place than when you joined it. And that's the only thing we can hope for in serving as city counselors, and you've done it in spades. And it's something that I hope that I will be able to say at some point. So thank you for serving the city, being my friend, and being my mentor, if you will.
Counselor Lo.
Gosh, Counselor Maya Guerrero, I am sorry I can't be there to tell you this in person, and everyone else has already said it so beautifully. I won't try to add much for fear of going on for five or 10 minutes and driving everyone crazy. I'll just say, I'm going to miss you so much. You know, one of the highest compliments that I can pay someone in this line of work, and the sometimes grindingly difficult work of government and the political process, is that someone is a happy warrior. And you, Counselor Maya Guerrero, are the textbook definition of a happy warrior. You lead with your values, you lead with your heart, you lead with, always with integrity. In many, 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 many conversations with you about so many topics, I can confidently say, whether we're up here on the dais or whether I'm just talking to you in private one-on-one, you always lead with integrity and your values and a sense of heart. And you're a happy warrior. You fight ferociously for the things you believe in, and you do it with a smile, even when it's really hard. This council and Lakewood are really going to miss you up here on the dais. But the good news is, we know you're not going away, and we know you're going to be a constant presence, and thank goodness. I'm thrilled Counselor Black is going to be taking your place, and I know she's going to be great. But man, we're also going to miss you so much, and you're just wonderful, and it's been a joy to work with you. Thank you so much for your service. We're lucky that we got it for four years.
Counselor Maya Guerrero, as being a part of my original team, as mayor, I want to say thank you for helping me learn. No surprise, this job is not easy, and it is incredible to have people by your side that will help guide you, teach you, show you all kinds of things from the very beginning. So I really, really appreciate the ability to work together, even before and most specifically after. And I will never forget when you, for our very first time visiting the Supreme Court in Washington DC for the NLC Conference, both of us were a little bit of a wreck, but you take the prize. It was amazing. This woman is a laser-focused advocate on the democratic process, and it has been absolutely incredible to learn from you on that. It doesn't matter whether someone agrees with you or doesn't agree with you, it's about the process. And I've really appreciated learning that part, and I will always remember that trip. That was very special. That was our first trip to DC together, as we had, you know, just four or five months in to our terms as city councilors. So I want to thank you very much for all of the work that you've done for our city and everything that you've been in partnership with me and the rest of your counselors through this time. So, thank you. All right, and with that, we're going to go ahead and go on to some-- well, would you like to say a few words? I didn't even offer it. Yeah, do you want to say, please? Yeah, go for it.
I will keep this relatively short because over the last four years, I've had a point of privilege to be able to speak from this bench about a myriad of issues that are very close to my heart, some that I came in knowing were a part of my platform and a part of my value set and my lived experience, my understanding of being a resident of Lakewood, and some of which were things that I was taught by my councils, my fellow counselors, and by my constituents and the residents of the community here. And you all have just said a lot of nice things in a row about me, and it's very disorienting because that's not really what we do up here. But almost all of you talked about learning from me, and I find that just so tremendously complimentary because I have learned so much in this role, and I've learned from all of you, and I've learned from all of you so much. And there is a level of narrowness with which you must lead, no matter who you are and what your values are. There's a level of decorum that you have to maintain just to ensure that people can get heard and to ensure that the system doesn't totally fall apart so that you can do the good work that you want to. And this is the very hardest and very best job I have ever had in my entire life. It's been an honor of a lifetime. I feel deeply privileged, and I'm also pretty excited to go back to being able to say everything that's on my mind. And you were right that I'm not going anywhere. I live about a 20-minute walk from here, so I do plan to come back. For those of you organizing on things in the community, I now get to say everything that I think, so reach out. I won't be hard to find, I will continue to be around. The only reason that I feel like I'm able to step down right now and the reason that I didn't run is because I found an incredible replacement who's already a community leader who's going to get sworn in this evening, and because this City Council is largely just closer to the actual representation of the Lakewood that I have experienced in my 11 years living here. You all are kind and brilliant and thoughtful, and you care about each other, and you care about the community that you're in, and it's amazing. And so to each of you, no matter how close we were or if we disagreed on things or not, the fact is that you all are working so hard to pay attention to your constituents and your community. And I ran at a time with several of you still up here and some others that aren't yet anymore, when that just really wasn't the case. It just was not the case, and it felt so important to make sure that there was a little bit more of regular people talking about regular people things. That seems so basic and frustratingly non-articulate of me, but we got that. We did that. This council makes sense. All of you make sense as representatives of your wards, your districts, your issues, and the things that you are passionate about, and I knew it would be okay if I stepped down. So thank you all for your continued leadership. Thank you to the community, to everyone who showed up tonight, everyone who will show up in the future, everyone who has been showing up for the last four years, the last 10 years, the last 30 years, and 50 years, maybe in some cases. I'm looking in the corner, and I know Lakewood's in really good hands. And my hands will still be here, but I'm so impressed by all of you. Maybe I'll come back in two years like Counselor LeBier. I love that plan for me. Yeah, thank you all. This has been the very coolest, best, most important work I've ever gotten to do.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, and with that, we will transition over and invite Judge Bozarth up here to the lectern to administer our oaths for our newly-elected and/or re-elected City Council members. Yeah. We're going to go 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. If you could raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Jessica Sharzai.
Do swear or affirm.
Do affirm.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances.
The Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
Of the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
And to faithfully perform the duty.
And to faithfully perform the duty.
Of the Office of City Council.
Of the Office of City Council.
Congratulations. Counselor-elect Black, it is your turn to approach the lectern and bring any family, friends, or loved ones that you'd like to have join you. friends, or loved ones that you'd like to have join you.
If you could raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Liz Black.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear or, oh, do affirm.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances.
The Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
Of the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
And to faithfully perform the duties.
And to faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of City Council.
Of the Office of City Council.
Congratulations.
And Ken Cruz.
Good evening. If you could raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Ken Cruz.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances.
The Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
The City of Lakewood, Colorado.
And to faithfully perform the duties.
And to faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of City Council.
The Office of City Council.
Congratulations.
Phil Wilperman.
If you could raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Bill Furman.
Do swear or affirm.
Do affirm.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances.
The Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
Of the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
And to faithfully perform the duties.
And to faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of City Council.
Of the Office of City Council.
Congratulations.
Paula Neistrom.
Good evening. I state your name.
I, Paula Neistrom.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances.
The Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
Of the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
And to faithfully perform the duties.
And to faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of City Council.
Of the Office of City Council.
Congratulations.
Okay, and with that, we will go ahead and break for a 15-minute recess to congratulate and/or send off everybody. So with that, what we will do is, we'll recess until it is 7:31 right now, so we'll recess till 7:46.
I will now reconvene the meeting at 7:52 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll for the new council?
Mayor Strom.
Here.
Counselors LeBure.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Cruz Kay.
Here.
Black.
Here.
Shar Azai.
Present.
Sinks.
Here.
Cruz Ay.
Presente.
Lo. We'll have to text and then get back on the line. Furman.
Here.
Nice Strom.
Here.
Okay, mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think Lo maybe had reconnected. Here he is.
Here.
Appreciate that. All present and accounted for. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. All right, welcome back, everyone. And this is the first point in tonight's meeting where the public is now invited to address the city council on items that are not on this evening's agenda. This initial period of public comment allows for up to 10 speakers to provide comment on any matter other than an agenda item and does prioritize those with special needs. Speaking during this initial period of public comment does require signing up to speak with the city clerk in advance of the meeting. There is no pooling of time during this initial period of public comment. The goal of public comment is to create an environment that welcomes all stakeholders to share their thoughts and concerns. Whether your comments are left on LakewoodSpeaks.org or here in council chambers, I do ask that all comments be directed up here to the city council, that anyone in attendance or online respect the decorum of council chambers and practice civility. And so that every speaker may be heard, I ask that everyone here in chambers also please refrain from applause or any audible support or discord with the speaker. Again, that is to make sure that everyone here that has come to speak has the opportunity to be heard. For anyone who in the audience that may be uncomfortable speaking in front of the room, you too are also welcome to leave a comment online at LakewoodSpeaks.org instead. Anyone will be able to leave public comments on Lakewood Speaks through 10 AM tomorrow. Please note that if you are speaking and have any handouts you'd like to share with the city council, please provide them directly to the city clerk and they will be distributed to the council following our meeting. The purpose of this time tonight is for us to hear from you. This is a listen-only session. If you would like to engage in a conversation with your counselors, with city staff, or myself, you may do so via phone, scheduled office visits, or an email. Tonight is for us to listen only. For those planning to speak tonight, when you arrive up front at the microphone, up here at the lectern, please start by stating your name and your address, or your name and your ward. Once the clock starts, you'll have three minutes to speak, and we will go ahead and get started. So with that, we have first up this evening Victoria Griffith, and then Amanda Phillips, and then Zee Williams.
Hello, councilors, mayor. Congratulations to the newly elected council members. My name is Victoria Griffith. I live in central Denver. A lot of you already know me. There's a lot of butterflies up here today. You see them on my hat, they're on my ears, on my arm. The butterfly has become sort of an unofficial mascot of the trans community because of the symbolism of what it represents, of having to go into that shell and cocoon to kind of protect yourself and find yourself, and then spending that time, and then ultimately bursting forth and spreading your wings as your beautiful actual self. And that is what's going on with us right now. Jax is gone physically, but spiritually, she is here with us tonight, obviously, but she's here with us in our meetings, in our rallies, and in all of the things that we talk about. A few weeks ago, there was a rainbow over the city council building. I don't have a whole lot of new things to say. I feel like I have already kind of beaten the dead horse enough. I guess all that I can really say is to do the right thing and, you know, have justice. We're relying on all of you guys. And I guess I just feel like, especially right now in a time when so much, so much power is being levied against our community as a whole, from the federal government, certain state governments like Texas that I had to flee from for my life, and then we have Colorado and we have Lakewood. And just like I said in my first meeting, y'all have a chance to stand up and look states like Texas and look the federal government right in the eyes and say, "Trans people do exist, trans people do matter, and we're not going to be cowards about it." They don't scare me. Maybe they scare some people. If I met Donald Trump right now, I would tell him exactly what I think of him. And he wrote an executive order on his first day in office negating our existence, basically saying, "Trans people don't exist." And his executive order does not define me, it did not define Jax, it does not define any of us. And you can keep waiting for permission from the right people to do what you know is right in your heart, or you can stand up on your own two feet and you can do it. Justice for Jax.
Thank you. Amanda Phillips.
Hello, council. I'm Amanda Phillips, speaking on behalf of Sherilyn Gritten Camus. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. This is a letter she received from Senator Michael Bennett on November 20th. Hello, Ms. Gritten Camus. I wanted to personally reach out and share that the Transgender Day of Remembrance resolution for 2025 has been formally introduced in both the US Senate and the US House of Representatives. The Senate version was led by Senator Mays Hirono of Hawaii, and Senator Michael Bennett joined her and 15 other colleagues as an original cosponsor. This year's resolution honors your beloved daughter, Jax, whose impact on the community remains everlasting. The resolution supports the goal and principles of Transgender Day of Remembrance by, number one, recognizing the epidemic of violence towards transgender people and memorializing the lives lost this year. Number two, recognizes that the alarming trends of increased violence against transgender people of the US, particularly transgender women of color, are unacceptable, and that finding solutions to these issues must be a pressing priority for the US government. Number three, supports efforts to study, respond to, and prevent violence against transgender people, affirms the principle that every person is endowed with basic human rights, and that the commitment of the US to this principle must encompass every single individual. Number four, recognizes the bravery and resilience of this transgender community as it fights for equal dignity and respect. Number five, recognizes the multitude of contributions and cultural impact the transgender community has had on the society of the USA. All the best. Your US Senator Michael Bennett, Spear Boulevard, Denver. Now, this part is from Sherry, as we call her, Sherilyn Gritten herself. She wrote to the council. Next month, you're going to study the concept of oversight for Jax. This is an ask we have made since June. It's now November. The last several months have for me been a study session on pain. First, it was the loss of my daughter. It hurts every day. Death is painfully final. She's gone. Then there was the shock. I always used to trust the police and the government. I believed that they and you would do right by Jax.
Ms. Phillips, your time has expired.
Her death would be investigated, and her injustices she faced would be addressed at the highest level. One second. And now I exist in the anguish of Jax being pushed to the wayside. Everyone's too busy. The detective's on vacation. The media cycle has moved on.
Ms. Phillips, your time has expired.
The city has bigger priorities. I have to scream. She says, "I have to scream louder and louder." I'm sorry, but I've got to finish this for her because she says, "The holidays are approaching, perhaps my last holiday ever. This may be Sherilyn Gritten's last Christmas ever. And while you may find your merriment and joy, I will continue to be an expert in pain. Please do something, concrete for her, please. Show me this isn't as hopeless as it feels, please, all of you." She's, her mom is dying. Thank you.
Thank you. Zee Williams, and then Jamie Frederick, and then Kyle Kingston.
Hello again, council. My name is Zee Williams. My pronouns are they and them, and I'm a resident of Ward Two. It's been a really hard week, this week. On November 19th, we honored the three-year mark of the attack on Club Q. My best friend is a drag artist and went in that night to celebrate their birthday and left the club with dozens injured, and the lives of Ashley Paw, Raymond Green Vance, Derek Rump, Daniel Davis Aston, and Kelly Loving gone. Kelly Loving was in Colorado to celebrate her birthday on November 16th. She's a woman I didn't get to meet in life, but she's become my sister in her death. And she's someone who changed Colorado law. She has changed the world. The next day was Transgender Day of Remembrance. We also buried a very beloved activist last week. And this pain is so deep. And I had to honestly pull myself up so many times last week because I wanted to quit. And I remembered one person, that's Jax. She's the reason I'm in this room, even though I've lived in Lakewood for years. But I knew, even if I didn't want to, I had to speak. It's been 32 weeks since Jax went missing. It's been 25 weeks since she was found dead. And there's nothing. There's been no answers. There's been no actions. It's just been heartbreak. For myself, I've been misgendered and deadnamed by the police of this community. I've been harassed by them. I had to listen to the tears of a mother who lost her beloved daughter. I had to clean out her apartment. I had to help make sure she was cremated in the way that her mother wanted, plan her end-of-life celebration. I had to see her body. I think I'm the only person not involved in the investigation that saw her body. And I speak to you all a lot, some of you probably far more than you would like, but I want to speak to you tonight about the people behind me and that are always behind me because they lift me up. To be a trans person in this room takes a lot. You risk being doxxed, threatened. You risk being treated poorly by people from our community. And there's also people in this room who aren't trans, and I think you all can learn a lot from them. People who come every Monday, even though they have children and jobs, they stay late at night to speak and lift up our most marginalized people. I ask you to learn from the folks that made it possible for me to be here tonight, from my community, the amazing, proud, trans community.
Thank you. Thank you. Jamie Frederick, then Kyle Kingston, and then Kia Martinez.
Hello, my name is Jamie Frederick. My pronouns are they, she, and I'm here to speak on the need for independent oversight. Justice for Jax cannot wait. Many of us have told you this time and time again. It is now November. There have still been no answers and no accountability for the harms done by the Lakewood Police Department. Jax's family, her friends, and her community deserve better. I know you want to get it right with oversight, and that process takes time, but Jax's case cannot wait. It's been months. Last Thursday was Transgender Day of Remembrance, a day when we honor and mourn those we have lost. So I feel it's important to repeat something I have said to you before. Trans people deserve to feel safe. We deserve to feel secure, and right now, so many don't. So many people in the trans community are hurting and scared. Trans people deserve to feel like we will not be brushed aside like so many of those that we have lost, as Lakewood police have done to Jax, her mother, and her advocate. Jax remains a shining light in our community. I know you all have seen her power time and time again in bringing all of these people in front of you. There are people here from across the state, and I know more watching from around the world. The people here have canceled meetings, driven long distances, and made it their priority to be here tonight. I urge you to listen to their resolve, to honor the time they have spent to speak up for justice for Jax. I urge you to prove that accountability and transparency still matters, that it is still your priority, that you give Jax, her family, her friends, and community the same level of care you would expect if something happened to someone you loved. Long live Jax.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kai Martinez. In peace be with all the trans souls. I am from Ward Three. I want to thank the City of Lakewood, Lakewood City Council, the mayor and city councilors of Ward Three, Ken Cruz and Roger Lo. And I would also like to correct that my name is Kai and you mispronounced it. I would like in particular that you remember and acknowledge the legacy of dreaming, that under oppression, we continue to bravely dream of a better world, one where we are safe in becoming ourselves. But more than this, to be a trans woman is to dream of a better world. And though I never met her, I could think of no better an example than Jax Grotan. Like many others in this room, I recently attended her celebration of life. This was, of course, heartbreaking. The entire time going there, I felt I had this feeling that I was going to my own, and now I truly believe that I did, for I feel that my life as a trans woman was celebrated. There I saw people who dreamed of a better world for everybody, just like I did. That is the trans community. That was Jax Grotan and many others. And every person that your police fails, every murdered, every unidentified, and every missing person that you have failed dreamed, just like me, you, and those I love. Justice for Jax, and may God have mercy on your cursed soul.
Holly Bombrea, and then Connie Reddick.
Hi, Mayor Strom and the city council members. I'm Holly Bombrea. It's B-O-M-B-R-I-A. I'm not from Lakewood. I came from the Colorado Springs area, but I used to live in the Denver area, and I sold lots of houses in Lakewood. And so I have really great memories of all those families and their happiness in going to Lakewood. I haven't written anything formal, and Jay told me that I need to give my gifts to him to give to you, but if you'll give me permission, I would love to come to the dais and give you each a bracelet. Can't do it?
We do need to go to the clerk.
That's fine. I can go by your rules. I wanted you to take a look at them as I'm speaking because they're beautiful. They're glass beads. It's a bracelet to remember Jax. And I don't care if you wear it or hang it from your rearview mirror or put it where you shave and brush your teeth or whatever, but I wanted you to remember the beauty of Jax. The first time that I spoke to you, I spoke to you as a mom because when Jax went missing, I don't even know how I got notification of her. I'm not in her community. I don't know her, but I've gotten to know her community, and it matters to me so much. And I just, my mother's heart went with Sheri. And so I just want to leave these bracelets for you, just as a memory that Jax was beautiful and she meant a lot to her mom. She was a beautiful daughter. She was a beautiful sister. She was a friend, a coworker. And I know you hear a lot of passion, and we kind of get turned off to the same thing that we hear over and over and over and over, and we see the same people over and over and over and over. And so we kind of get deadened to the message. And I didn't write a message for tonight because I just wanted to give you something beautiful to remember a beautiful person. And again, put it wherever you want it. Please don't throw it away. Kind of glance at it. Don't let it blend into your landscape of your busy lives. I appreciate you guys. And the Denver P.D. and the Lakewood P.D. have lots of facts that can be looked into and really given their time and attention by this independent committee that you guys approved. And so I really, really, really encourage you to remember her beauty and take a look at your bracelet and remember a beautiful person. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you looking at me, too. I didn't write anything formal, and I feel like you guys are listening to me. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
For some reason, I'm never seen on the screen or anything. And I would like to be first from now on because I am disabled. I'm on, out in the dark, and under the ADA, I'm asking you for a reasonable accommodation to make sure that you don't save me till the last. Thank you.
Thank you. We do go in order of signing up.
Okay, thank you.
We make sure we save space for you.
Okay. Well, the space that I would like you to know, because I am ADA, and it's late and I'm on a bus, that instead of waiting to be the last person, I would like a reasonable accommodation to be the first person.
Your clock is running. I don't know if you know that.
No, I don't know that. But that's something that I need to say. The first thing I'd like to say, I went to your office because I had a cybercrime and identity theft, and I stood a half an hour, and you sent me over to the police department. Instead of them going with me to the place or looking at the paperwork for my bank or anything, I was told, "Oh, it's a civil problem." And so they called the person up, and the first thing he said, "I was reporting a cybercrime and identity theft and plus theft and plus the fact that the person they talked to," the first thing he said, "Well, would you talk to her about the little boys?" I never talked to them about no little boys, so I don't know where all that's coming from. But what I'd like you to all know, God sees all, and every one of you are responsible because I've come in here since 2018 to tell you about how I have been having hate crimes from my building, from your office, from the police department. Everywhere I go, my name is slandered. None of you know me. I have fought for rights with Clarky Gonzalez. I have changed a lot of laws. And the thing of it is, why don't you support me? My family built this city. I was born here. I don't know where all of you are from, but people from Colorado respect and helped others from all over the country. And I'm just one person, but my building is not, we have a lot of problems there, and nobody has went to even check up. People are dying. And also Metro West, I was told that you spoke to them about me saying, "Black Lives Matter." Well, I am a black woman. I'm a biracial woman. I'm black, I'm Latina, and I'm Native American. So if I want to say Black Matters, I have my constitutional rights, and my constitutional rights have been taken away from me because every time I speak up, it's like, "Do you know the Constitution?" No, you must not because you're not abiding by the laws. Every single law has been broken with my housing, actually with you also. This isn't even ADA-equipped. The doors don't open up. People have to open it up for me. And the thing of it is, why don't you care about people with disabilities? And the thing is, I'm a mother.
Ms. Reddick, your time has expired.
Okay. All I want to say is God sees all, and you're all responsible, and quit slandering my name. And I am going to go to home security and also the Justice Department and the FBI to have an investigation.
All right, moving on, that is the final initial public comment that we have for our initial public comment period this evening. We'll move on to tonight's consent agenda. Do we have any items that are requested to be removed from this evening's consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please read the consent agenda into the record?
The consent agenda is comprised of the following items. Item 5A, O 2025-36, declaring the intent of the City of Lakewood to acquire interest in property for public purposes for the construction of storm and sanitary sewer facilities from east of Wadsworth Boulevard along West Colfax Avenue to Dover Street, and authorizing negotiations with property owners, acceptance of conveyance instruments, and condemnation of real property interests subject to further approval. Item 5B, O 2025-37, prospectively accepting an application to adjust the operational service area of the City of Lakewood Sewer Utility to include and extend sewer service to property within the bend at Lakewood Metropolitan District Service Plan area. Item 5C, O 2025-38, authorizing a development agreement for the bend at Lakewood Urban Renewal Area for land located at 11061 West Second Place, Lakewood, Colorado, and approving the park and open space plan. Item 5D, O 2025-39, an emergency ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement for leased property located at 8,000 West Colfax Avenue, Lakewood, Colorado, by and between the City of Lakewood, Colorado, and Volunteers of America. Item 6, approving city council minutes, special meeting minutes, October 6, 2025, special council meeting, October 20, 2025, special city council meeting, October 29, 2025, special council meeting, November 3, 2025.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rob. So we will go ahead and open up public comment on the consent agenda because this evening consists of only meeting minutes and first reading ordinances, really the only comment or the public comment is open to the meeting minutes of city council. I do not have anyone that has signed up to speak on the consent agenda this evening. Is there anyone in the room that would like to? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and close public comment. May I please have a motion?
Mayor Strom, I move for the approval of city council minutes. Order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearing set for the date included in the ordinance, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
All right, a motion has been made and seconded. Do we have any discussion on tonight's consent agenda? Meeting minutes. Seeing none, okay, please go ahead and cast your votes. All right, that passes 11 yeses and zero noes, and that is our only voting item this evening. So that opens up the second portion of non-agenda public comment. And with that, I would like to invite forward Alicia Swartin, then Lazarus Movi maybe? Moore, Lazarus Moore, and then Bradley Bruce.
Hi, it's Alicia Swartin, like a swan that weighs a ton. I'm from Jefferson County. I've been here many times before. I'm here for Jax, and I'm here to hopefully get to your hearts about kindness and understanding. This is the first holiday that Jax's mom, who unfortunately is battling cancer right now, has to go without her daughter. The first Christmas, she has to go without her daughter. And I know that pain because of lost friends, way too young, and not because of the circumstances that Jack were lost. But I understand that. Understand the crying alone, the not knowing what to say, the being angry. And I really, really hope that every single one of you can please, in your hearts, find it to not make her go through more holidays without answers, without feeling like anyone even gives her the tiniest bit of respect. Jax was kindness and light to me. That's all she was, and that's all it took. I spent hours, I canvassed Fort Collins, Greeley, Colorado Springs, anywhere I was and everywhere I was, talking to people, hanging flyers up, just so that her mom could have some answers, because my heart went, "No." And I spent time talking to Ken Cruz, and he spent five years waiting for answers for his brother. Please don't do that to Jax's mom. Please don't do that to her friends. I've sat in this room even tonight, eating cookies and chocolate because what else am I going to do while I'm crying? I don't know how else to put that to any of you, except that pain, it's not right. She came to Jax's celebration of life, Isabella did, and gave us all roses. To me, that was kindness, pure and simple. And that's what I'm asking you for because I've sat here and heard you talk about love and community and all these other things. And I'm not trying to be a jerk, but that really seems like you're throwing things in people's faces and not caring. I've been cut off of leaving public comments on this meeting multiple times over weeks. I started emailing people because no one would let me leave a public comment, and I'm not the only one. So please, in your hearts, for these last 15 seconds, have the compassion to do an oversight committee. Please let there be justice for Jax and for any other human that shouldn't have to be standing up here going through this. Thank you.
My name is Lazarus Moore. I'm from Arvada. My pronouns are they, he. And I didn't know Jax personally. I didn't. I will admit that. I got to meet them through their service in June. I got to meet them after they died. I got to meet the memory of a person who should still be alive. I got to meet the person who is not alive, who should have justice. I met the person who isn't alive, that should have solace. I met the person who should, should be in peace. They are not in peace. They are, they are, I don't know how to properly explain it. I have a personal connection to Lakewood. I went to school here for five years, the first five years from kindergarten into fourth grade. I went to school down the road at Glennon, which is now closed. I was here. This is my community. This is where somebody who is in my community died. I do not know how to properly articulate right now how disappointing and sad that is that somebody died. It doesn't matter what their identity was. It doesn't matter what they did. They do not have peace. Their family does not have peace, and nothing is happening. The things we asked for are still not implemented. I have been at these meetings to see that you have looked at us, you have stared at us, you've watched us talk. us, you've watched us talk, and yet still you have not given us what we asked for, which is, which is a reasonable demand. You put it off. You put it to December. I am now 17. I am 17 years old, and I am a trans person. I feel scared. I turned 17, crying in my mom's arms, asking, am I going to be alive to see the time I turn 18? The answer is maybe not. That shouldn't be the answer. I am a child. That should not be how this goes. I should be, I should feel safe. I should feel protected, and yet I do not. Please, please, justice for Jax and police oversight now.
Thank you, Bradley Bruce.
Hi, my name is Brad Bruce. I live in Lakewood. I live in Ward 2. I'm here to speak on three things this evening. The first one is the oversight for the Lakewood Police that I believe is completely necessary to not only protect the trans community, but every single community of people that might be marginalized in Lakewood. Some of you might know that I spend every Friday evening feeding our homeless community here in Lakewood, and they tell us the most horrible things about our police. They tell us the most horrible things about the CAT teams. And so, but there's no way to prove that because there's no entity that is observing the police. So I think it's necessary, again, not only for Jax, but for the people that are currently alive in this, in the city that you are supposed to be representing. And I just don't understand why good things are impossible to implement and take months and months of research, and we have to talk to the lawyers, and we have to talk to blah, 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 blah. And then every single day I wake up and read the worst news ever, every single day. So like, why is it impossible to do good things? Passing a proclamation to this evening, well, is nice. You know, I can't say that it's not nice. I'm from Ohio, where they wouldn't have done that. But it doesn't make a material difference in the lives of the people sitting behind you. It doesn't make a material difference in the lives of your constituents that aren't here. So I would encourage you to do more. Second thing I want to speak about is there was a pedestrian death, two and a half weeks ago, on Friday, November 7, at around 6:00 AM on the intersection of South Wadsworth and West Eastman Place. I believe that's in Ward 5. This pedestrian was killed after being struck by a motor vehicle. And I took a look at the 2025 Lakewood Bicycle Plan, and I don't currently see any proposed improvements to that intersection. You've already lost one constituent there. I think it would be a delegation of duty to not implement some sort of improvement to that intersection, so more people do not die. So please pass a resolution to amend the bicycle plan to improve safety at that intersection. And then finally, real quick, I just do want to give a shout out to the Jefferson County Public Library Workers United Union. Right now, they are fighting for the last 15 months to get their first contract signed with the Jefferson County Public Library Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees has left the bargaining table because the union is asking for 48 cents per hour increases in pay. Seventy-five percent of the 340 total library workers in Jefferson County make below the living wage in Jefferson County. So I would encourage you all to pass some sort of resolution demanding that the Library Board of Trustees negotiate with their workers in good faith, because we're losing librarians because they can't live, they can't afford to live in the county that they provide services to, and I think that's ridiculous. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, I have Jessica Shimku or Shimkil.
Hi, my name is Jessica Shimku. Great job on the pronunciation, actually. It is a tricky one. Mayor, nice to see you again. It was great having a meal at the City Sparks. I really do appreciate your time and your time tonight and making space for us. I am currently a resident in Wheat Ridge. I'm your neighbor. And my kids went to school, great special needs program at Green Mountain Elementary School. And we've had a lot of great reasons to move to this area. We're actually from the Detroit area. And so I'm thankful to be here every day, and I'm finding new reasons to be here all the time. And I brought my kids here, my four kids, by myself. We traveled from Michigan in a little van, and we came here because we wanted to feel safer in our community. And so I am here in solidarity with Jax's mom and everybody else who comes here all the time, gives their time for justice for Jax, because, you know, if something were to happen to our kids, we would want people to at least admit that there's a possibility that something really terrible could have happened, that somebody could have committed a very heinous hate crime. And when people won't even admit that that's a possibility, that is a major red flag. We can say that there have been mistakes that have happened here, and so I think that we need to just take a step back and move forward with this oversight. It is awkward to say, hey, we, we need this. I understand that. And so I really appreciate all the work that everybody has done so far and getting the word out about Jax. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of misinformation in this case as well. There's been, you know, political people who are, you know, saying things about Jax that, that are untrue, and what we need to do is set the record straight and find out exactly what did happen to Jax. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bug Peterson, and then Chantel De La Cruz.
Hello, city council members. My name is Bug Peterson. My pronouns are they, them. I organize with the Colorado Springs Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression. I'm here today to stand in solidarity with the family, friends, and community of Jax and to echo their demand for independent oversight. I want to echo that this independent oversight task force needs teeth, subpoena power, and needs to be comprised of people who are not law enforcement. The actions that you, as a city council, can and should take here are things that I don't imagine will only affect Jax's case. I imagine vast ripple effects of safety in Lakewood as well as far beyond. Organizers and families across the state and likely country are paying attention to this case and your actions. You have an opportunity to inspire other city councils. Police oversight and accountability are essential for justice for Jax and the trans community, and they're also things that make all of us more safe, maybe with the exception of killers who cops are protecting rather than indicting. People being paid with our tax dollars to keep us safe should keep us safe, and when they don't, when they inflict or add to the harm, trauma, and pain, there should be transparency and accountability. Law enforcement agencies very repeatedly demonstrate that they are unable or unwilling to hold each other accountable, and that's why independent oversight is so essential. Families and communities grieving their loved ones should be able to grieve their loved ones, not have to fight for accurate information, and that's why subpoena power is so important. Grieving families certainly shouldn't have to deal with transphobia from law enforcement and in the handling of the case, or deal with ongoing disrespect and dismissal. It's been terrible to hear of the ways Lakewood PD keeps mistreating Jax's family. Justice for Jax can't wait. At this point, we need both the continued work to establish the permanent independent oversight board and give it the power, the teeth it needs to be effective, and we also need immediate action and oversight for this case to ensure justice for Jax. We won't stop fighting until there's justice. Thank you for joining us in that struggle.
Thank you. Chantel De La Cruz.
Hi, my name is Chantel. I live in Ward 1. I come before you as someone who cares deeply about Lakewood's future. I've learned something essential. A city's strongest foundation is the people who live here. The parents getting their kids ready in the morning, the workers commuting to jobs, the students striving to learn, the neighbors caring for one another. These are the people who make the city move. Going forward, the city has a major responsibility to its people, to invest in us, plan for the long term, and build a sustainable future for generations to come. That means advancing clean energy, closing gap deficiencies on our streets, complemented with a variety of transit options so everyone can get where they need to go, and ensuring housing meets the needs of all incomes and supports workers, families, and seniors who make Lakewood thrive. There's a story that has stayed with me. Over a century ago, Redstone, Colorado, was built as a model community for the coal miners who powered the town's coal industry. Cotages, a school, shared spaces, designed to support the people who made it thrive. But it rested on a single foundation. When coal operations failed, the town struggled. Redstone stands as a warning. Without sustainable, people-focused planning, even the grandest visions cannot withstand the test of time. That lesson matters because I see Lakewood at a similar turning point. Our city is growing, and growth can be powerful if we do it right, if we focus on the long term, and if we build a city where families, workers, students, and seniors aren't just getting by, but have a real chance to thrive. I see every day how much people already support Lakewood's future. Neighbors help each other, share resources, build community, and fill the gaps the city can't always breach. We are the connective tissue woven in the city's fabric. Because of that, Lakewood's future must be built on stronger foundations. We need a city where movement is independent, safe, and accessible. Sidewalks that don't just exist but connect, transit that actually gets people where they need to go, and spaces designed for kids, seniors, wheels, and walkers. Mobility is dignity. We need housing that reflects reality, not just market trends, diverse, affordable, mixed-income housing options that allow teachers, service workers, young families, and everything in between to stay rooted right here. We need clean, resilient infrastructure, energy-efficient buildings and housing, EV and solar-ready capacity to power our neighborhoods, not because it's trendy, but because it lowers burdens on residents and protects our future. And we need transparency and real partnership. When people understand how decisions are made and when community voices are included early and meaningfully, we get better, fairer outcomes. There are already people doing the work, organizing neighbors, advocating for a sustainable existence, and taking responsibility for our part in a healthier future. But we cannot carry it alone. We need the city to meet us halfway. I'm asking Lakewood to choose a path that puts people first, a path that learns from Redstone, honors our history, and builds a resilient future for everyone who calls this place home. Justice for Jax. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's the last I have up here. Was there anyone in the room that wanted to speak during non-agenda public comment that has not signed up? Okay. Mr. Curry, do you have a sign-up sheet? So if you wanted to go ahead and come forward, do we have anyone else? Just one, two, three? Okay. Over here is where you'll want to sign up. If one of you could start, go ahead, you can come up and speak first, and we just need to make sure everybody gets signed up. No. No, that was the proclamation. You can pick if, over here if you'd like. Yeah, that might be easier.
I can see the timer from here. Hi, I am Reverend Jackon Cudrin. Represent Park Hill United Methodist Church. I live in Weld County. I wasn't originally planning to speak, so I really don't have an agenda before me, but I do one thing I do want to say is, every November 20th, every year, we get together and remember those who are taken violently from us. We read, and we read the names of all who were murdered or had died by violence within our community. And it is my dream that you all will do whatever it is in your power to take action, to see that, that, that day comes when November 20th arrives and no one has a name to read. And I just ask that you do whatever it is within your power to carry out that dream. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you'll start by giving us your name and address or name and ward.
My name is Rebecca Layton. I live in Westminster, Colorado, and I use she, they pronouns. I also did not originally plan to speak because every Monday that I have been able to come to these meetings, you have not heard us. We've stayed till midnight and been unheard. I am not tucking my kids in bed tonight to be here to support community who has supported me many times. I have dear friends and family that I have had to bury over the years, and I am sick of burying them. I am sick of saying goodbye to them. I am sick of tucking in my four children. I'm sorry, one adult child is no longer at home. He just got his first apartment. But my three young children, who I have to explain why I'm not there to tuck them in, because I envision a future where their friends and their family and their loved ones no, do not have to come and do this. For every mother, for every parent, for every grandparent, for every sibling, to not have to come and speak for someone they have lost who they care about. If it was your child, how quickly, how swiftly would you want answers? Would you want to sit here until midnight and then be turned away? Because this community is beautiful, and they stick with each other. Through the grief and the sorrow, there is also joy and laughter, tears of sorrow and joy and grief, all wrapped into one. And we just ask that you hear their cries and that you celebrate life and you fight for the lives that are no longer here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Kathleen Smith.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Kathleen Smith, and I am a former resident of southeast Denver. I was a client of Jax, and I was her neighbor and a friend, and I was heartbroken to hear of her missing and ultimate death. It has been a shock on the whole community. I am sorry that I have not been more present at these meetings, but I have been in spirit. I am asking for more accountability with the police department, more aggression with finding answers and being honest with what has happened to Jax. She was a businesswoman that paid her taxes, and she inspired others to grow our community. And I don't want her light, her mission, to be snuffed out to save faces or names. We have to keep each other accountable, from our own family members to our friends and neighbors and those who serve our city and neighboring cities. Jax was supposed to come home, and she didn't. And I'm asking, when you go home tonight, to just please keep fighting for her. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Brock.
Good evening, Mayor Strom, esteemed council members. My name is Brock Peters. I'm a resident of Arvada. Jax was a good friend of mine. I've known her, knew her for about 10 years. Obviously, said to no end how heartbreaking this has been for the community. This is my first opportunity to speak before the council. And Representative Cruz, thank you very much for attending her celebration of life. That meant a lot to us. This is not my first council meeting that I've attended. As has been mentioned by other members of my community, that due to the timely nature of this city council meeting, many of us have not had an opportunity to speak. But we do begin every city council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, which ends with liberty and justice for all, for all. And if someone is not receiving justice in a timely manner, then nobody is receiving justice. There is a reason that our government has three branches for accountability, so that no one can have too much power. And I greatly respect, you know, the office of our police officers. And as a resident of Jefferson County- And as a resident of Jefferson County for most of my life, I have to say that I am disappointed in the way that the coroner's office has handled this. It mentioned that the coroner's mentioned, you know, that there was methamphetamine in Jax's system. They did not mention, when they talked to Newsweek, that she had a prescription for Adderall. A quick Google search can verify that in a decomposing body, Adderall can be mistaken for methamphetamine. This is why we have to have oversight. And I appreciate the fact that you have granted an oversight committee. But in the name of time and justice, we need oversight faster. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fiore, do we have any more? Okay, all right. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment for tonight. And I do not have any topics on general business, so we'll move on to our executive report, if we have one. Nope. Okay. All right, council, council reports. Ward one.
Yep, thank you. I want to just share, I had the opportunity to travel to Salt Lake City last week and over the weekend to attend the National League of Cities City Summit. Enjoyed that experience with Councilor LaBure. Had the opportunity to hear around public comment, topics around that, freedom of speech, tiny home villages, and unique ways that they're approaching that, and just a whole range of topics. And so just really a lot of value and gratitude for the time able to invest in learning it and looking forward to bringing some of that back. I also know that we have the bend tonight on first reading, and we weren't meant to talk about that. And I know that we're going to have a lot of questions about that when it comes back up on the eighth. And I just want to share a little context from my experience on this property. This is one of the first things that we advocated for in a early trip to Washington, DC, when it was still Ed Perlmutter in that congressional seat. And we had asked, is there an opportunity for us to purchase this land? And unfortunately, there wasn't because of past decisions by council that had predated many of us that are up here today and were in his office in 2022. And so then, when the GSA finally did release this land again for a bid, it wasn't a bid anymore. There was only one group that really came forward and was interested in purchasing this land. And so for, you know, all of those reasons, I just want to make sure there's an understanding of the context. This, what's being proposed at the bend at 10% affordable units and at 60% AMI is bold. It goes further than what the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance that's being drafted out of the Housing Policy Committee is suggesting. It also is remediating a brownfield, which we tremendously know that we need. And do I love the project? Does it do everything I hoped that it would do? No, they never do. And I just want to name that and make sure that folks have an opportunity to still ask questions. We really appreciate hearing from the Neighborhood Association around there and some of our folks that have been advocating for affordability. We do want to have you continue to push us to do more, and we can always be asking for better projects. But also, this project has a tortured history in our community. This land was meant to, at one time, serve our unhoused population, and unfortunately, that wasn't the value system of the council at that time. And so we continue to see this come up again and again. And I, for one, am excited for this but willing to continue to have the conversation to ensure that we're continuing to push more for that. That's it for me. Otherwise, happy holidays for those who celebrate Thanksgiving this week, and looking forward to coming back and getting to work with some of our new councilors.
Thank you. I would like to echo some of the things that Councilor Shirazai said. When we had the meeting back in May, May 12th this year, we heard some public comment about the unsafe, that the residents would be put in harm because of this brownfield. But I would like to call to attention page seven on 5C. And so anyone listening, you might study that piece on Article 7A, where it brings out that they want to ensure spaces used by the public do not constitute an unreasonable environmental risk. And so anyone, you know, concerned about that, you don't have to be. Science works. Science will measure. Science will make sure that constituents, that those living there will not be put at risk. So, so please set your minds at ease on that. I would also like to thank the Union Square Neighborhood Connect, and thanks for that thoughtfulness. They're close neighbors to the bend, and I appreciated the main points that were given to us by Shantel. I like the emphasis on connectivity, that we need to be sure that we have the sidewalks there, the bike lanes, pedestrian paths, et cetera. So connectivity and workforce and affordable housing, as my co-councilor mentioned, the great plan in place for that. And then, of course, how we want to build energy-efficient buildings, and through it all, keeping residents informed and involving the neighborhood early. And so as we move through this process even more next month, pretty quickly, that we will be emphasizing these things, and thanks for leading on that. And then my last point is that, yay, happy holidays are here. And so we will have no ward meeting in December, but we will start up in January, first Saturday in January with a ward meeting. No second, second, I hadn't changed that in my calendar yet. Thank you very much. Second Saturday in January for our next ward meeting. That's all I have.
Ward two.
I can get us started. Yeah, and then I'll turn it over to you for your first ward report. Just wanted to start by welcoming Counselor Black. That's, there's a good ring to that. I look forward to working with you. And also did just want to say thank you to the folks in the audience for your continued dedication to Jax, and thank you also for allowing me to share space with you at the celebration of life. It was beautiful to see the live painting, the songs, the performances. I think it really carried forward what I have heard from Jax, from the folks in this room and from folks beyond. So thank you for that. With regard to our ward meetings, Counselor then-elect, now Counselor Black, and I had our first ward meeting yesterday, so I wanted to thank the 30-ish people who came to share space with us at Wolf Love Studios, a new film production business in our 40 West Arts District, and look forward to our next ward meeting, which will be on December 9th at 5:30 PM at the Three Leeches Theater. And we will continue collecting food donations at our ward meetings as well. Thank you to everybody who brought us donations on Sunday, yesterday. And then finally, really excited to continue our Pack the Pantry initiative. Thanks so much to staff for your work on ensuring that there are plentiful opportunities for folks to participate in this time when hunger is really at the forefront of so much of what we're thinking about, and as our community faces continued need that has really increased. And even with some of the smoothing of the wild issues we saw with SNAP and the federal government's weaponization of hunger as a political weapon, we are trying to feed our neighbors. So please, as you're visiting your local rec center, you're coming to give, comment here at council, or taking a class at the cultural center, there's going to be donation boxes in all of those places, the big barrels. You can see one right out here. All of that will be going to the Action Center, and on our website, there is a ability to participate financially, too. So thank you to staff for your work on that again, and thank you to the community stepping up for your neighbors in this time.
How exciting. I'm going to keep this really short. I just wanted to extend a huge thank you to everyone who supported my campaign, came out to volunteer with me, knocked doors with me. I also wanted to extend a huge note of gratitude to the other councilors, many of whom, sitting up here, helped me during this journey. I'm so excited to serve in this role. I'm honored, I'm humbled to be up in this space, and I do take the role very seriously. I'm really, really just incredibly grateful to be able to support and advocate for a ward and a city that I have loved so much for over a decade. And thank you so much. I'm really looking forward to learning and growing in this capacity.
Ward three.
All right, I'll start us off. You know, I just want to second Counselor Black. In regards to the election, you know, again, thank you for those who volunteered and got involved. Thank you for those who voted. Thank you for those who, you know, voted for me and those who didn't vote for me. I think that is one thing we can guarantee about this process, is that everyone has the opportunity to be heard and cast their vote. I would say there are multiple opportunities here at play to get involved. I will say, you know, the Lakewood Advisory Committee has a few seats on their diversity committee. So if that is something that you're passionate about, please go to the city's website to look on how to apply. I also want to talk about November 29th, which is Small Business Saturday here in Lakewood. If you do go to the city's website under Economic Development, you will see an amazing map that that team put together in regards to all the amazing shops where you can shop local this holiday season and hopefully continue to support our small businesses after. And then the last thing I want to share, you know, it's something I did after being elected earlier this year. I will be launching a listening tour, part two. So just look out for more information on that. Feel free to email me if that's something that you would like more information on. I'll go ahead and pass it over to my co-councilor, Roger Lowe.
Thank you, Counselor Cruz. Congratulations on getting sworn in for a four-year term, and congrats to all the members of council who were sworn in or re-sworn in. Sorry I can't be there in person, traveling this week for the holidays, seeing my in-laws who are out of state this week. But just a couple of quick notes. First, Counselor Cruz and I have a, there'll be a Ward Three Holiday Happy Hour coming up on Tuesday, December 9th, 4:30 to 6:30 at Old 121 Brewhouse. Note for, by December 9th, there's actually going to be two Old 121s that the new location is opening, I think, a few days before that. So just make sure you go to the Old One, that I think will be renamed Ye Old 121 Brewhouse at 1057 South Wadsworth, 4:30 to 6:30. We hope to see you there. Saw, I saw that the Belmar Skating Rink was opened, I think by our very own mayor and representative over the weekend. Come check it out. Great to see the lights lit, great to see the tree up and lit. Belmar Skating Rink open until 9:00 PM every night till 10:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. So come check that out. I, and I think many other members of council, hope to see you on Friday, December 5th, at Lakewood Lights at Heritage Belmar at 5:00. Always a good time, always a lot of holiday merriment there, so we hope to see you then. Flagging a topic of interest citywide, but certainly for a lot of Ward Three constituents, our upcoming study session, one week from tonight, December 1st, is going to be on traffic calming, sidewalks, and speed safety. Lot of interest in that, I know, from many Ward Three constituents. If folks have thoughts on that, I would encourage you to leave a public comment on Lakewood Speaks. You can stream that live at 7:00 PM next Monday or watch the recording, but you can also leave a comment, I assume, unless the mayor cracks otherwise and assume through, at least through the end of Monday evening on December 1st. So go ahead and leave a comment if you have thoughts on traffic, traffic calming, speed safety. Counselor, I Cruz already mentioned the Pack the Pantry food drive, but I'll give a big plus-one for that. More details online, bins in all the rec centers. Big, I think it's through December 5th, so do drop off stuff. Big thanks and gratitude with everything else that they're juggling to the staff for putting that together. Good job, really excited to see that pulled together. They flagged the items that most needed are cereal, oatmeal, cooking oil, rice, canned meals, canned soup, canned fruit, peanut butter, granola bars, pasta, sauce, cat and dog food, and holiday food. And last but not least, thank you very much again, as always, to the folks who came out and shared about Jax and spoke about Jax. We really do, you know, listen in a very heartfelt way every time, and I really appreciate hearing from you all. So thank you for coming out. We know that you're taking a lot of time out of your schedules to come again and again, and we hear you. To that end, I think a lot of folks know this, but you'll see that there's a study session on the creation of an oversight committee on our agenda on December 15th. I think clearly, given how much we've heard about this for several months, I'm really glad that's on our agenda coming up, that's 7:00 PM virtual study session on December 15th. I am hoping and expecting to get some concrete progress updates on, you know, the path forward to make sure that this gets pulled together in a timely, linear, actionable way and isn't sort of on the back burner too much longer. Congrats again to the new councilors. Big happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays. Hope to see folks around. And do come by Tuesday, December 9th, to our Ward Three Holiday Happy Hour. We hope to see you there.
Ward four.
Well, I will add to the list of people who have thanked the community for the support, those who supported my campaign, and I'm grateful to be able to be here and do the work of being on this council again. I did want to say, obviously, I feel privileged to be able to serve with everyone that's up here, so I'm grateful for that as well. December 7th, we have a ward meeting at Green Mountain, 1:30 to 3:00. Unless something has changed, part of it will be a presentation about Bear Creek Lake Park. Dave can correct, or Counsel Ryan, pardon me, can correct me if I'm wrong there. I did want to say one thing, you know, again, I know we're not talking about the bend, but it is a, it is an exciting project, one that I will be honest, I've been interested in for a long time. I'm excited to see it happen. That said, and I do think they are doing a lot, the 10% affordable is massive. I will admit to being concerned, however, because I'm concerned about both parts. Well, I mean, one of them being the resolution to the Green Mountain water strikes me as a choice that was made because it was probably expedient, and time is money in that world. But I do think that it indicates that there is possibilities and ways to do other things to solve the issues, to move it forward. So I'm hopeful we can continue that dialogue as we get to the next phase of this, because I think there are some pieces about this that are critical to benefiting the whole city and what is really a huge piece of what will be important as the city progresses and as this development happens. I think making sure we get the assurances I believe we were promised earlier on in this effort, I think will be critical. And so I'm concerned and optimistic all at the same time. I think there are things we can do to improve what we're looking at. I also want to thank everyone who continues to come out. I think it is important that the community sees you engaged and understands the importance of supporting everyone in the community. So I feel like I'm forgetting something, but again, thank you all. Hand it over to Counsel Ryan.
Well, I am excited that my co-councilor has been re-elected and so many, everyone else that have had a chance to serve was re-elected as well. And I'm especially excited because I have had an opportunity to serve with Councilwoman Black on a board, and I'm excited for everyone to see just the dynamo that she is. Ward four meeting is on December 7th, which is a Sunday. It's a little different for us. One of the, we'll have two topics. One is, we want to hear about what you guys would like us to see us do as a city council moving forward next year, because we'll have an opportunity to have a retreat to come up with our legislative priorities, and we want to hear from, we want to start hearing from you as to what those are. The reference that my co-councilor made to Bear Creek Lake Park, we were initially optimistic that the Corps of Engineers was just going to recommend a minor increase in the water storage. And for those of you who haven't been paying attention, a number of cities had asked to store their water there, which would have devastating effect. The, a previous city council passed a proclamation opposing that. And to their credit, all the cities except for one have withdrawn their request for water. There was supposed to be a hearing on Thursday, an informational hearing, and that was suddenly pulled. And I want to thank the city because they had staff ready to attend that meeting and would have attended that meeting if it had not been postponed and continued. We're going to have a presentation at the Ward Four meeting from Katie Gill and others who who follow this very closely, and will be able to share, hopefully, some of the updates as to what's going on, and to let you know how you can become more involved, because there, Bear Creek Lake Park still is very threatened. It's a very realistic possibility. There's some legal issues now that I'm hopeful will make it more difficult to do what one city wants to do, but we need to hear everyone's voices. And so, I encourage you, whether you're in Ward Four, or you're in any of the other wards, this is your opportunity to find out how you can help raise your voice, to make sure that the Colorado Water Board also understands your concerns, when it does come time for them to have that on their agenda. And other than that, again, for those of you who celebrate, happy Thanksgiving, and also want to share the shout-out for support the small local businesses here in Lakewood. There are many fantastic ones, and they need our help.
Ward five.
To start off with, I do want to extend my appreciation to constituents in Ward Five who supported my reelection. I was humbled and pleased to see the results, and I'm looking forward to continuing on working on improvements and enhancements and unification and community building in Lakewood. I'm going to be very focused on that going forward, and I hope that we will see some positive results out of that. I was able to, on Saturday, the 15th, attend the Sustainable Neighborhoods Leadership Meeting, and it was a fantastic event, very well done. There were presentations there from Caitlin, Jeff Wong, MJ, Katie, it was Christie Saron. It was really an encouraging and enthusiastic experience, and there's a lot of great things that they're doing. And I just want to give people a heads-up that they will be adding two new neighborhoods this year, and there is information on the City of Lakewood Sustainability website about the application process and an open house that they're going to be having. So I would encourage anyone in any ward in their neighborhood that wants to get involved. It's a great opportunity to do so, and it brings people together from all ages. This past Saturday, we had a ward meeting, and Brett Berninger, I always say his name wrong, from Community Resources, came and did a presentation and an update on the rec centers and projects that are going on within the city at several different rec centers, and was able to clear up some of the confusion with the residents of Ward Five. And if anybody wants some details on that, Brett is a great source, or I can kind of fill you in on the details. But it was well-received, and I think timely. So, and I do appreciate, again, everybody bringing donations that we've, I've been taking to the Action Center, clothing and food items, and again, that we touched on a lot of, there's so many different places that you can donate food and help people out right now. And in individual neighborhoods, people have created their own little food bank. So, you know, please continue to contribute and help out others as best you can during this time. And with that, I'll turn it over to Counselor LaBure.
Thank you. I just want to start off by congratulating our new counselors, our counselor, and our re-elected counselors. So congratulations, glad to have all of you here, and looking forward to working together. Also want to mention, as our mayor pro tem mentioned, I was at City Summit last week, and I just want to kind of report back on that. I think it was an amazing experience. I'm sort of blown away by how good it was. I wish I had known more about City Summit sooner. I went first time last year, and still, you know, it takes a lot of time to really learn about the experience. But unlike DC, NLC's City Summit is a training ground and planning meeting, so there's an expo to learn about great technology, services, and companies that make government function well, and help serve our residents better. It's a great time to learn, there are classes, seminars, field trips, where they take counselors to see innovative policies that other cities are doing. Salt Lake City actually has a wonderful, huge, mega, sort of homeless shelter that they're working on building. And the state of Utah has a lot of huge tax incentives, driving, you know, film and movie industry to their city and their state, and that's, I thought that was interesting, they had a behind-the-scenes tour on how some of that was working out. There's social events for counselors that I think really help build strong relationships, national relationships with other members of council. So it was good going from Tampa to Salt Lake this year, really getting to meet and, you know, regroup with some of the counselors I had met on previous trips. And I think right now, honestly, with this, in this time, with federal turmoil, I think it's actually more needed than ever to have boots on the ground there. I was actually, you know, watching the delegates from all the different cities working to push our national lobby to identify where cities stand, and they were working to try to get resolutions passed to really speak to the harsh tactics that the federal government is using in schools and churches related to ICE raids. And unfortunately, that vote failed by 12 votes. And this is the kind of thing that, you know, I think NLC can do more to speak loudly in defense of all of our community members, could stand up for immigrant communities, to expand tax credits for affordable housing, to support the many federal workers who have been unpaid or laid off. And I think the trainings that could tell us more about how we can better use CDBG funds in the city. You know, I reflected even more on it, and I'm sorry to keep going long here, but, you know, it really kind of hit me even more personally, because my mom texted me on Thursday, and she said, hey, it looks like I'm not going to have health insurance next year. I'm screwed, being a diabetic, that's a quote. And then I said, and then she said, I probably won't live long. And I told her, you'll be okay, we'll figure something out. And I share that to say that federal advocacy matters, state advocacy matters, for all of our community members. And I know it's easy to think no one is listening, but I think that's when we need voices the most, and I think it's frankly, time to raise hell. And I think a lot of people are struggling right now, and I think, you know, I plan to continue to try to do more, both at the state, federal, local level, to really kind of highlight these issues wherever I see them. So just wanted to share that, and have a good night, and have a good holiday. Thanks.
All right. Well, one of the benefits of going last is that from the Pack the Pantry, to the tree lighting, to next week's agenda, things have already been covered that I had on my list. So I, one thing I will just mention briefly, I went to a very exciting ribbon cutting at a DMV on Monday. Yes, I said exciting and DMV, all in the same sentence. It was really actually for a very important cause. They are rebooting or relaunching their program of check the box to donate organs. So watch for that. I don't know where you'll hear it, on TV, social media, on TV probably, or radio, all of the above. But for anybody that is getting a driver's license soon, or renewing a driver's license soon, I just want to say a reminder to please consider donating, and making sure that you're communicating with your loved ones that those are your wishes. It's incredibly important. I do have a family member that has been the recipient of donor tissue, as I'm sure I'm not the only one up here. So just say a quick word about that. And then also, you know, kind of to dovetail off of what Counselor LaBure had said, the story about his mother. If I could, as the mayor of this wonderful city, impress upon one thing to everybody that's watching this meeting tonight or tomorrow, we have had an enormous amount of human beings in our community, from those of you that are here supporting Jaxx tonight, to others around our community that are fighting to try to keep a roof over their head, or to figure out how to afford food, or another one that just disappeared, oh, health insurance, thank you. It's been a hard year for a lot of people. We are now amidst the month, the National Month of Gratitude. So please, take a moment, find something around you to be grateful for, and look for someone who you can support as we get through one of the most challenging seasons of the year for many people. Just be kind and show, shop local. So with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting. It is 9:16 PM.